So, call this meeting to order and open with the pledge of allegiance. Now, if you please.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming to our meeting tonight. This is the March 6th, 2024 meeting with planning and zoning commission. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bobbs.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Browering.
Here.
Mr. Mancino.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Churex.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, all present. So, we'll move right on into old business. We have four items on the agenda last month that were tabled. And so, just for simplicity, I'll move that we, I understand that they are all ready. Is that, that's correct?
That's correct.
With, I'll move that we remove application ZOAN 24001, REP 24001, ZOAN 24002, and REP 24002 from the table.
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Browering.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Churex.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Mancino.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. So, first up.
First up, we have ZOAN 24-001 located at 8855 East Broad Street, 18 South Belmar. The applicant requesting a recommendation of repurpose to rezone five lots from R20, medium density residential to GB, general business district. But here are the lots in question. You have two, three here, the fourth one, the house, and then the small, little, tiny one up here on Broad. So, again, it's a total of five properties of the Summit Ridge Height subdivision. Frontages are to the west on Summit Ridge, north Broad Street, south, or east on South Belmar. Existing commercial structures on Lot 7, 8, 9, and part of Lot 9, an existing single-family home on Lot 10. Proposal is to rezone all these lots from R20 to general business. Lot 7 to 9 currently is zoned residential but occupied by commercial use for some time. Lot 10 is currently a rental home. The applicant wants to bring the existing use into compliance and potentially allow for the expansion of the existing structure on the lot. They did state that they're looking at expanding their business either by constructing in addition to the existing building on the west side of South Belmar or by constructing entirely new building on the east side of South Belmar, which will be a coming application. So, they did include concept plan, shows a 3,700 square foot in addition to the existing structure, some landscape buffers along the south of property line with no additional access points. As this is a straight rezoning, we can't put any conditions on it, and they aren't beholden to the concept plan. It's, the plan is purely conceptual at this point. Any future development does have to meet Petazca Code and is subject to a TCOD application. So, when it does get developed, it will come back before you guys. Here's the concept plan they submitted. I also mentioned they did submit a replat application that will come up just after this to combine all these lots into one. Part of our view, playing in zoning, went off of the following comments. The future land use map recommends medium density mixed use. Requested GB is in line with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan. Straight rezoning, again, is not beholden to the site plan. It's purely conceptual, just any future development, let's come back before you guys for a TCOD application. Can't place any conditions on a straight rezoning, and following a recommendation by you guys, ultimately it will advance to city council for final approval. City engineer had some general comments to keep in mind as the applicant moves forward in the process for any future development. Didn't receive any other comments from any other departments or agencies. Surrounding properties to the northeast are general business. On the north side of the road, you got a car wash and auto parts store. South is R20, which is single-family homes, and to the west is actually Reynoldsburg. That's the Dollar General over there. Do you have any questions on this application, do you have to answer?
Thank you. Questions from the question? Alex?
No questions.
David?
I don't have any questions.
Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Dan?
What is this current business there?
It's breathing air systems.
And they want to expand that business?
As I understand, yes.
That's the plan?
Yeah. Might be better to ask the applicant.
That's all.
That's fair.
No questions.
Great. Thank you. We have the applicant here tonight. If you would step forward, and Lisa will swear you in. And if you would, start with your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Badger with Badger Ryan Concepts, PO Box 8656, New Ohio.
My name is Mark Schuster with Breathing Air Systems located at 8855 East Broad Street, Reynoldsburg, Ohio.
You're happy to answer any questions, if you might have.
Okay. You just want to start with questions for us?
Yes. Johnny's done a nice job, that's what we're here for, so.
Okay. David?
I don't have any questions.
Jerry?
No questions, sir.
Just one. Lot 10, I believe you said you had a residential home under your rating, is that correct? Or a rental? I was curious what the future is for that, if it's being graded or are we leaving that there?
That home, until at some point when we decide to expand that building, would continue to be a rental, either for residential or commercial. That's, you know, the plan would be to demo that at some point in the future.
No other questions? Thank you. Anne?
I have a question about that property, too. This is the property that's south of the current building.
To the east of the.
Southwest. Which, which is the, which is the property that's south? Okay.
The east.
There's another one, I think you're thinking about.
There's another one that's.
As you can see on the, the concept plan, the existing building and the house next.
Yeah. Isn't there a property south of that, too?
That's, that's coming up. That's on the next.
I know. But we have, can we talk about that before we discuss this one?
No. That's on the next.
Can't approve it, or?
It's a separate application.
I know. I know, but it's all in my brain. All right. I don't have any questions on this one.
Thanks, Frank.
No questions.
Alex?
No questions.
Thank you. Stand by. You've got, you've got four applications here. Any other discussion on this application? And if not, what's your, what action would you prefer to take tonight? Again, this is the rezoning.
The rezoning.
This will go to council.
Right.
Is there any public comment?
I have no speaker request forms for that.
Yeah, I just wanted to chat.
Thank you. Always a good chat, a good thing to verify.
I mean, I'll be more than happy to make a motion, and then we can have discussion, if you'd like. I recommend that we approve the rezoning application number ZOAN-24-001 pursuant to section 1217.10 of the Petazca Code.
I second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we recommend approval of the application. Discussion? Again, this will go to city council. They'll have their own here.
One quick question, I think it may have already been answered in here. Any, any improvements that are made to the lot then have to follow the comprehensive plan or the, the setback rules and screening and all of the rest of the.
So, they'll have.
For general business.
Yeah. They'll have to meet Petazca Code, general requirements of GB landscaping and the TCOD overlay district.
So, that will come back to us for the TCOD?
Yes. So, any development is subject to the TCOD, it'll have to come back before the playing and zoning commission for approval before they can proceed.
Any other question, discussion amongst yourselves? If not, a call for a vote?
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Browering.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Mancino.
Yes.
Mr. Churex.
Yes.
That motion passes. It will go through city council, who knows when? They have, they have to have a hearing.
Thirty days, so we're in March, so probably soon as it will be late April, if not May.
Okay. Thanks.
Then the next application, I think I mentioned it earlier in the presentation, this is a replat to combine all those same properties that were just, had actually taken upon them into one lot. Along with that, so there's their proposed replat. I will mention, there is an existing easement right through the middle of their building. They're proposing to vacate. There are no utilities in it, aside from the service line to that building. Don't have any issues with that. Did have a couple of comments on the formatting of the replat that'll be addressed by a condition. And then, as far as modifications goes, the applicant shall submit a replat MyLR in accordance with section 1113.39 and 1113.44 of Petazca Code with comments, playing, is any staff have been addressed? And then, they'll have to submit a replat MyLR that's recorded within 30 days of the latest signature. But the third one, the replat should not be considered approved until a final decision on the rezoning application, ZOAN 24-001 by city council. And if you have any questions on that, you have to answer.
Thank you. Gary, start to do this, though.
No, sir. No questions at this moment.
Tim?
No.
Tim? No questions.
Alex?
Nope.
David?
No.
You have any comments on this one? Okay. All right. And again, no speaker request forms, just wanted to make sure nobody in the audience had a comment. Okay. Commission members, how are we ready to act on this one, then?
Sounds like we are.
I'll make a motion that we approve the replat application, REP-24-001 pursuant to section 1113.48 of the Petazca Code with the following three modifications.
Listed. Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Discussion? I'll just start repeating again that this would not actually be effective until council approves of rezoning. The other discussion? Call for a vote?
Mr. Churex.
Yes.
Mr. Browering.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Mancino.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next on the agenda, rezoning application ZOAN 24002.
Yes, so this is for the east side of Belmar Drive. This is specifically for Lot 54 of the Summit Ridge Height subdivision right here. They are requesting to rezone that from R20 to GB as well. So, again, it's Lot 54, the Summit Ridge Height subdivision. It only has frontage to the west on the South Belmar. There is an existing single-family home and accessory building there. However, the applicant did already receive a demolition permit to remove those structures earlier this month. Proposal is to rezone from R20 to GB. The applicant also owns slots 11 through 13 to the north, fronting on Broad Street, which already is zoned to general business. The applicant, again, they say they're looking at expanding their business either by constructing in addition to the existing building on the west side or by constructing entirely new building on the east side of South Belmar. They did, again, include a concept plan in this one showing a new commercial structure with parking, full access on the South Belmar, and right and right out on Broad Street with screening pursuant to Petazca Code along the south property line. Although, again, because this is a straight rezoning, they're not beholden to that concept plan, any future development does have to come back before the playing and zoning commission for a TCOD application. Here's a look at their concept plan they provided. Again, they'll be replating these lots as well, so that application will come up. The future land use map recommends medium density mixed use. Consider the request to rezone to GB is in line with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Again, because it's a straight rezoning, they're not beholden to the site plan, it's purely conceptual, they will have to come back to the playing and zoning commission for a TCOD application. Can't place conditions on a straight rezoning, following a recommendation by the commission, we'll go to the city council. City engineer, again, had some general comments to keep in mind for future development. Didn't receive any other comments from any other departments or agencies. Surrounding properties to the north is general business, to the east is general business at R20, which is a single-family home, to the south and west are also R20, which is a single-family home to the south, and on the west side of Belmar, you got the existing breathing air systems in a single-family home. If you have any questions, you have to answer those.
Thank you. Questions for Jack?
Any, any sound concerns from the future plans there for the, says you have residential neighborhood around it?
Not really, because you have the buffer requirements that you have to, it was kind of, I believe, a good place to kind of keep on, something consideration, that there's a residential back there. But that's the core of it, that is, you know, good for business.
Anything else?
Yes, no?
Dan?
Not yet.
We do questions for applicant or book, either this way? Either, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
So, if, if you guys are, you'd put buildings for, potentially on both sites there, would you potentially add on to the one building and then build on to the second property? Or would it be one or the other at this point?
It would be, what we'd need to do first is add the new building and then add on to the existing building after that.
Okay. I mean, I think that's all I have.
Alex?
Just clarify, they already received the permit for the demolition, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. No questions.
David?
I don't have any questions.
Jerry?
I just have one, and I know it's a conceptual plan, but I see that you show a exit out onto Belmar. Is, is that already like the driveway for the house that was already there? Is that where you're looking at doing that? So, then at that point, there'd be like a study to see, you know, for traffic for, if there's any residential right there, that we'll take a look at that, correct?
Yeah, they go through the TCOD, it has options in terms of left turn lanes, diesel lanes, access roads, or the catchall, whatever the, the public service director, city engineer seats fit. So, depending upon what's proposed, that might be trigger a traffic impact.
Okay. Thank you. And last question I have is just for my own personal, how'd you ever fill in the swimming pool that is in the middle of that building?
You lie gravel.
That's all I have. Thanks, sir.
Thanks. Other question, Dan? Are you ready?
Do we need to mention the, if we approve that? Okay, so, on the staff review, you state that the, the commission may choose to include that the replat shall not be reported unless the approval of the rezoning for Lot 54 has become official. Do we need to make mention of that?
We can do it with the replat application, that'll come up next.
Okay. That's all.
Any other discussion? There were no speaker request forms on those one? Any public comment? This is the rezoning. Yes, sir, if you step up front? Lisa will swear you in, and then you need to give your name, address.
Hi, I'm Joel Maynard. I live at 59 South Belmar, which is right next door to where they're putting the new warehouse. I don't really have any, I'm not against it, I just have a question and a concern that I just wanted to state for you guys. One, my whole entire backyard, I just purchased this house six months ago, maybe, and I didn't know that my whole backyard was a pool. So, I'm concerned when they start digging or doing whatever construction over there next door, that the runoff might actually turn my crawl space into a pool as well. On top of that, I just wanted to know if they have to put a fence bordering their property from my property? So, that way, I don't know, I can keep my kids away from trucks and vans or whatever. That's all I have.
Okay. To the screening requirement, there?
So, in GB, when you're adjacent to residential requires either L3 or L4, which is six-foot high screen, one of the options is a six-foot high fence.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
That's, like you said, that's one of the options. It doesn't mean that's.
The other is a six-foot tall, like a big shrub row.
Okay.
Should be a bound and then a shrub.
I just wanted to make sure that there is something there, so my kids didn't wander over. The fence that I have, it was put up there previously, but it's like half a fence, and that, according to everybody, the ground is too soft to even set concrete posts. So, I just wanted to make sure that there'd be some way to keep my kids away from the trucks and vans and business and whatnot.
And on, and on your other concern, any, any development, the requirements are not to increase runoff on adjacent properties.
Right.
That's a simplistic way of stating it.
I just wasn't sure, because the way the land is, if you look at it, the property next to mine is really built up, and I don't know if they start digging, if water's going up. I just wanted to raise a concern just for you guys to, whoever's doing the construction to look at, you know, that, keep my yard in mind, because if I get any more flooding, my crawl space is going to be flooded.
When it does come time to develop, we'll have to do stormwater calculations to kind of figure all that stuff out. Basically, I won't say they'll fix it, but they can't make it worse.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Could I ask one question? And I know you haven't been there long, but can you kind of elaborate maybe where the water's coming from? Is it coming from the north, southeast, or west? Or do you even know at this moment?
Oh, well, to be honest, my, it's a problem for me and my neighbor who is, he would be to my left. So, I'm to the left of the property we're discussing.
Okay.
He is to my left. Both of our yards are just very concave, so we just both get this huge pool. It's pretty much my whole entire backyard. I have like a sixth or a seventh of an acre. Probably four, a fourth of it is my backyard, and it's an entire pond.
Okay.
So.
One of the things you may just want to kind of try to find is where that's coming from, too, because that will help for down the road.
It seems to me it's just leaking in from every direction.
So, it's coming from all four sides.
I have a field in the back behind me, and that's above, too. So, everything around me is just built higher, and it's all just leaking in. So, I just wanted to address that concern.
Appreciate it.
I'm not against the business terms that they're putting there, I just.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? If not, commission members, how are you?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning application number ZOAN-24-002 pursuant to section 1217.10 of the Petazca Code.
Thank you. I have a motion to recommend approval. Let me have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Tim. Discussion on the motion. And call for vote?
Mr. Mancino.
Yes.
Mr. Browering.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Churex.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next on the agenda, replat application, REP 24002.
Yep, so kind of same thing as before, I mentioned it during the past staff report. So, this replat application has combined the rezoning that was just voted upon with the three existing general business lots fronting on Broad Street. There is an existing easement right through here that doesn't have anything in it, so they're proposing vacating that. Didn't have any issues there. And then, same thing, kind of going to Ann's comment, there's a condition on here that it shall be considered approved until a final decision on the rezoning, because if it was replatted before the rezoning is approved, that would create a split zone to lot, which we can't do. So, that's pretty much it. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Seth? No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, applicant, do you have any comments on this one? Good. Commission members? Are we, well, I guess I should ask, are there any public comments on this specific application? Pardon me? Okay, not, uh, let me just, kind of do like that.
Make a motion. I move to approve replat, replat application, REP-24-002 pursuant to section 1113.48 of the Petazca Code with the listed modifications.
We have a motion to approve?
A second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Call for vote?
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Smiley.
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs.
Yes.
Mr. Browering.
Yes.
Mr. Mancino.
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
All right, that's only, that was all the old business, so we'll move on to new business, and we have item A. We have replat application, REP 23003.
So, location of this one is at 1795 Keeler Drive. Multi homes requesting approval of a replat to adjust the front building setback line for Lot 269 of Hazelwood subdivision. So, here we are, that's 1795 Keeler right there. We've got Keeler Drive on the south. So, the property was planted in 2018, the existing. So the property was planted in 2018, the existing home is setback 26 feet from front property line, there are some existing easements on the lot. They were requesting to replat lot 269 into lot 269A and move the platted front building line from 35 feet to 25 feet, bringing the existing home into compliance with the plat, retaining all other easements and dimensions on the property. Here's a look at their proposed replat, bringing the building line to 25 feet as opposed to the 35 feet where it is now. So when Hazelwood started construction, 2001, several lots throughout the subdivision had varied platted front building setbacks line to kind of vary the frontages throughout the development. There was positive construction, when it started up again, they kind of carried that over. The permit application, when it was submitted, showed a 25-foot building line, when it was in fact platted at 35 feet. So there's an oversight on both parties, the application was proved in error. 25 feet is the code minimum, but the platted setback was at 35. So we didn't discover that error until last year, when the previous owners went to sell. Staff reviewed the engineering plans, there were no interference with utilities in the current location, no concerns with the proposal, pretty much just fixing an error. Surrounding properties to the north, you have Plan Development District, which is senior view estates, to the east, south, and west are R7, which are all part of the Hazelwood subdivision. So should the planning zoning commission choose to recommend approval, following modifications be considered, the applicant shall submit a replat Mylar in accordance with section 1113.39, 1113.44 of Petazca Code, and that Mylar has to be recorded within 30 days of the latest signature. Do you have any questions that we have to answer?
Okay, thank you, Jack. Any questions for Jack on this application, correct?
No.
Alex?
No.
David?
No.
Jerry?
No, sir.
Tim?
I just have one question. There's two homes to the west of this property, address 1787 and 1791. I noticed that those homes were in Ford also, are they under the same 35-foot requirement?
No, those ones are 25.
Okay, good deal.
I just wanted to know who approved that. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
To be fair, I think that was the first permit I ever approved. It was 2018.
Probably was. All right, now that's all.
Okay. Do we have a representative from the applicant here? Oh, okay.
Hi, Mr. Rancino? Please swear. This is your application. I wish you could make the legislation. Thank you.
Hi, Nikki Martin, Polty Homes of Ohio, 475 Metro Place South, Dublin, Ohio, 43017. I have no additional information to provide, staff was extremely thorough, although if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions? Let's see, who is? Always track tonight. Alex?
No questions.
David?
No.
Jerry?
No, sir.
Yeah?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, are we prepared to act on this? Seems pretty safe for a week.
I'll make a motion that we approve the replat application, REP-24-003 pursuant to section 1113 dot 48 of Petazca Code with the following three modifications listed.
Second?
Or two, excuse me, two modifications.
That's what you heard, right?
Yeah.
All right, I moved in second, we approve the application with two modifications, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Burrowing?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Churex?
Yes.
Mr. Rancino?
Yes.
That motion passes, and it's approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, rezoning application, ZON 24003.
So location of this is at 7482 Columbia Road Southwest, in two adjacent parcels. The applicant's requesting recommendation of approval to rezone three properties from AG Agricultural to PM Plan Manufacturing with a planned district overlay pursuant to sections 1217.10 and 1261.6 of the Petazca Code. So if you look here, these are the parcels in question, there's three of them here, one larger, one smaller, one, and a medium-sized one. And then you got Edna Parkway over here to the west, Columbia Road on the east. So the properties all total about 136.75 acres, there's existing single-family homes, agricultural structures, the remainder of its farm, frontage on Columbia Southwest to the east, and partially wooded to the west, and there is an existing access easement to the west along to Edna Parkway. Proposal is requesting a rezoning from AG to Plan Manufacturing with the additional adoption of a planned overlay district pursuant to section 1261.06 of Petazca Code. A planned overlay district works in conjunction with the base zone and may apply additional requirements or allow exceptions to general regulations. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant, shows the buffer zones required by the new Plan Manufacturing regulations. This red line means no access on to Columbia, and showing the existing access easement through adjacent parcel to Edna Parkway here. So as part of the proposed planned overlay district, it did include some access requirements. Primary access shall be through the existing easement on Edna Parkway, no access to or from Columbia Road, and that access to another arterial or collector through adjacent properties may be permitted, but not to Columbia Road Southwest. Division of property, so each lot, or you can do a thing called a commercial condominium, must meet the minimum area and width requirements of the PM zoning district. Required setbacks shall apply on each lot or condominium. Required setbacks from residential uses or districts shall apply on each lot or condominium, even if such lot or condominium is not adjacent directly to a residential use or district. And the required side rear setbacks shall apply on a condo that does not abut a public right-of-way, or excuse me, required side rear setbacks on a condo that does not abut a public right-of-way shall also apply to the side rear lines of such condo. Division of property, the max percentage of lot area may be occupied by structures shall be 65% based on the total area of the property, not each individual lot or condominium. And then plan review and approval at the time of development, the applicant shall submit a Plan Manufacturing application to the Planning and Zoning Department, and the Planning and Zoning Commission shall approve, disapprove, the application based on compliance with the PM regulations of the Petazca Code, the planned overlay district. Concept plan again shows the properties supposed to be rezoned, the setbacks, buffer areas, access on Edna Parkway, and no access on the Columbia Road for any of the PM uses. The narrative statement, the applicant stated that the subject properties, in addition to the properties to the northwest and south, are within the Petazca Corporate Park in the CRA area. The applicant believes future development would not be hazardous and disturbing to future uses, as large setbacks are required and required buffers would screen from adjacent residential uses, and there would be no access to or from Columbia Road Southwest. They also say there's no specific buyers or users yet, the owners would continue to farm and live on the property, but they do desire it to be rezoned and ready for future development. As part of our review, staff does have the following comments, the future land use map recommends Flex Industrial, so the request would be in line with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Additionally, the properties are already within the corporate park in the CRA agreement area. Did have one small issue, the proposed overlay district text, that was the applicant used the plan review approval process from the old PM regulations that we got rid of last year. The current code says that Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council. Made aware, this inconsistency, they have supplied an updated Plan Development District text with the correct procedure to follow the current code, that's in your staff report there, we've also added a potential modification to have a clean copy sent to council for their approval, or consideration, excuse me. So following recommendation from the commission, the application will go before City Council. Surrounding properties to the north, you have agricultural, which is a single-family home and agricultural uses, to the east is AG, which is agricultural use, to the south is agricultural and plant manufacturing, which is AG uses and some undeveloped PM land, and to the west you have plant manufacturing, which is the future Red Rock development. So should the Planning and Zoning Commission choose to recommend approval, the applicant's request, following modification may be considered, the applicant shall provide a clean copy of the complete application to the Planning and Zoning Commission Department prior to proceeding to City Council. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you, Frank. Questions? I told you, it's one of those nights. Jerry?
I do have one question, because I know we had this come up on the property that was farther north of there, when the fire department said that there needed to be a safety access, and I got a feeling they're going to say it needs to be on Columbia. That will still have to happen if the fire department states that, is that correct? It won't be an entrance for business use, but there would be a, can the fire department say for safety issues, they have to have an exit?
No, no access.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I know that happened on the other property. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah.
The setback requirements, the new mounding, all of that with the overlay district, is that the same with the overlay?
So the overlay just added those kind of additional restrictions that were named, the base PM zoning stuff does apply.
Still, okay, that's all. No other questions?
Frank?
No other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, so in the future, if we, for example, made stricter setback requirements or buffer zone requirements, would this PM overlay be the priority for new construction there? Or would those new requirements be the primary, and they would overlap whatever was present in this?
The overlay district governs.
Okay.
But where it doesn't specifically mention it, the PM district governs.
That's correct.
That's my question.
David?
And you stated it may be in here that the access to Edna Parkway is already a dedicated easement, it's not something that needs to be worked out?
Yeah, that easement already exists.
Any other questions for staff? Let's go to the applicant.
Connie Klema, PO Box 991, Petazca, Ohio. I'm very excited about this, because it's the first time in my history that I've used the planned district, and it's, I found it in your code, and I don't think it's been used. Not to our knowledge.
I've been here, no.
I've been here a long time. Anyway, I've been following some of the issues that have come up with planned district, and know that you have revised the planned manufacturing district, and added the setbacks and the mounding and all this that I think are very good. But in addition, I know that there have been with other applications, issues that came up about what happens with lot splits, what happens with buffering, do they, they still have to maintain it if it's internal to the property, what happens about a lot of things. And so I pulled this in, talked to your staff, and determined that we can use this, and this basically just adds the extra layer of protection, so that you know now what happens and what's required. And before, as you know, you couldn't apply text, additional text to a straight zoning, and now with this, sandwiched together, we have the additional safety nets there, confirming no access to Columbia Road. If in fact your PM district became more strict, it doesn't say anything about the buffering, so the PM district, as it would be improved, or not improved, depending on your opinion, it would have to follow that. So the only things, as Jack said, that the PM, the planned district text basically addresses are those precautionary things about lot splits and access right-of-ways and that type of thing. So, you have any questions?
Okay, thank you, don't go away. Welcome back, by the way, it's been a while since you've been with us here. I'll kind of preempt Jerry's question on the secondary access, if the fire department, the fire district requires that. You've addressed that through the possibility of an easement through adjacent properties, like...
Yeah, what I, what I put in here, obviously, we already have the easement the city established to the, to the park, but as we know, it's about 336 acres. We're not going to go to Columbia, how are we going to get through? Well, as, as different properties develop or whatever, they can try to get easements through other people's properties. But if you know, my text says only to particular type of roadways, so that it would be to a roadway that only could uphold that type of development. So it wouldn't be to Columbia Road, as Jack said. So there has to be routes to go, and in the future, there will be routes, I'm sure, as more of the corporate park is developed.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know that you had stated, you had stated that there's no owner yet, or no, there's no owner or future plan, is that correct?
There's no developer at this point that, that's in hand. Of course, a lot of interest. These are people, Robinson, Family Farm, and Gail and Tom Lee own this property and want to continue farming it, but also want it to be available for industrial use as intended by the comprehensive plan and in the, in the corporate park.
You answered my second question, is what was their vision for it, so thank you.
Okay.
Frank?
Not right now, no questions.
Thank you.
No questions.
So David, I think it's rezoned, then the agricultural use is grandfathered?
Yes, and I believe in plant manufacturing, it's permitted use anyway.
That's permitted use?
Yeah.
That's a good question, because if I missed that, I'd be in real trouble.
It's a permitted use.
Okay.
I always enjoy our conversations, but I got no questions, Kyle.
Thank you. In case there's anyone speaks, I'll be able to respond to. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just, well, I'm sorry, public comment? Anyone have a comment on that? I have no speaker request forms, but... Okay. Commission, are we prepared to act on this tonight, or having a discussion before motion? Or hold it until after motion?
If not, I'll make a motion that, that we approve the rezoning application number ZON-24-003 pursuant to section 121 dot 10, with a planning district overlay pursuant to section 1261 dot 06 of the Petazca Code with the following one modification.
Thank you. A motion to recommend approval with the one modification on the street.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion to approve? We'll call for vote?
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Rancino?
Yes.
Mr. Churex?
Yes.
Mr. Burrowing? Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
That motion passes, and that will also go to council, same timeline, second, or the end of April, or...
Lady of April early day.
Yep.
Thank you, Roger.
Thank you. Great. Next application on the agenda is final plan application, FT 24001.
Yes, so location of this one is at the northeast corner of Road B Road and SR 310. The applicant's requesting approval of a final development plan pursuant to section 125.20 of Petazca Code for Phase 1 of the Hazelton Crossing Plan Development District consisting of 41 single-family lots. Take a look here, the parcels outlined in yellow are the entirety of the, is the Crossing Plan Development District, aside from this little lot right here that's outside of it. The area shaded in red is Phase 1. So Hazelton Crossing is a plan development district that was established on May 6, 2021, as a result of the settlement agreement between the City of Petazca and the Southgate Company. The property was rezoned from AG to Plan Development District in March 2007, further adding another parcel with the rezoning from AG to PDD in 2016. Total about 95.35 acres, split into four sub-areas. Four sub-areas are retail and commercial, assisted living, condominium, and single-family. What we're looking at today is Phase 1 of Sub Area D. So the application, again, is for Phase 1 out of four total of Sub Area D. Construction plans were approved on November 8, 2023, consists of 43 single-family lots, two reserve areas of stormwater basins, full access on the Red River Road on the west side of Phase 1, and emergency-only access on the east side. So take a look here, it's again, it's kind of the whole layout of the Plan Development District area with Phase 1 of Sub Area D right here. Here's a look at kind of the general layout of Phase 1, and an illustrated plan showing the landscaping and the reserve areas and street trees. So staff has reviewed the final development plan, has drafted a list of comments, which is attached to your staff report there, most of them are minor revisions, such as additional information from previously approved plans, formatting, clarifying. City engineer did have some comments, and also the public service had, had some comments on the comments from the city engineer. Basically, the only one here would be lot 41 appears too close to the adjacent curve in the street to the west, and at minimum restrict the driveway for the... and at minimum restrict the driveway for this lot to the east, to the east side of the lot. The other three comments were addressed by the public service director by referring to the approved construction plans. Didn't receive any comments from any other departments or agencies. Surrounding properties to the north, you have planned development district, which is another future phase of residential for Hazelton Crossing. To the east, you have R 15, which is in Harrison Township, which are single-family homes. To the south, you have planned development district and agriculture, which are also, or excuse me, are Anta Township, which are single-family homes, the Cameron Chase Development. And to the west, you have the planned development district, which is the future commercial component of the Hazelton Crossing Development. So should the planning and zoning commission choose to recommend approval, all modifications may be considered. One, the applicant shall address all comments from the public service department, city engineer, the planning and zoning staff. Two, after all comments and questions have been addressed, the applicant shall submit a mylar copy of the revised final development plan, planning zoning department for signatures and records. If you have any questions, I may have to answer those.
Thank you, Jack. Questions for? And? Frank?
None.
Ellie?
No.
David?
So they've already received approval for the construction plans.
Correct.
And now they're coming for the development, isn't that kind of backwards?
So the preliminary development plans first, which has already been approved, construction and then final per phase. This is the kind of the end of the process. Final ballot plan really just making sure that any conditions of approval or preliminary plan have been addressed and that, you know, there weren't any major changes in the construction process.
Jerry?
I, I do have a question for what's where the Ashburn Lane is. What's on the opposite side of that? I see there's an entrance, it really doesn't give a good plot view.
Is this here?
No, down, oh, right there, what's on the opposite side of the road of that, of the entrance?
Of the entrance? I think that's the entrance of the subdivision across the street. Yeah, at the Cameron Chase and then the township.
Yeah, okay, so that's right where Cameron Chase, okay. I couldn't find that, so I apologize. Perfect, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on staff report at this time? The applicant? It's worn in and?
Good evening, Jim Lithno, Rockford Homes 999 Flares Parkway, Suite 200, Columbus 43240. I'm here on behalf of Rockford Homes. We agree with every, or the comments in the staff report. Other than that, I do not have any additional information for you, here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Frank?
If approved, what would be the timing you're thinking for?
So our construction plans were just recently approved and so I'm out to bid on it right now. We would probably start as early as this month, but probably no later than 45 days.
That's all.
Helen?
No questions.
David?
No questions.
Jerry?
No, sir.
I have two questions for you. The first was I noticed the email from Dr. Perkins, the superintendent of schools, not giving a recommendation on it. I was curious to what your response would be to that.
I actually, I can't comment on that because I haven't seen the letter.
The other one was just about if you can comment on any improvements on the Refugee Road is kind of tight right there at the intersection.
Yes, that, that I can address. So we've been back and forth with the alignment of the road wise. We do have a turn lane, a road widening and turn lane going into the subdivisions. And so we've been working with the City of Patasko staff on the alignment, whether it's a northern alignment, center alignment, or a southern alignment. We've come to a conclusion that it's a, a center alignment, meaning it's been widened on both sides of the road and those plans are actually being drafted as we space. There's a condition that we can, cannot occupy a home until that is built.
Any other questions for that? Okay, thank you, stand by. I got two speaker request forms, Marilyn Green?
Hi, my name is Marilyn Green. I live at 188 Stony Grin's Drive, Patasko, Ohio, 43062. I am a Southwest-looking bus driver. And right now, our schools are overloaded. They're not getting any better. We've been told we might have to go to a three-tier, another school to be built. And we just keep adding more homes to this, to our area. And we just, we don't have any. The schools are, well, I think you all know the high school was pretty much overcrowded before it was even finished. And, I don't know. And my other question is, you're saying these are going to be single-family homes. Are they going to be single-family homes? Because in all these new developments and they're saying single-family homes, as a bus driver, I know they put five, six, seven families in these single-family homes. Is this going to be protected? Or does it matter? Do you understand what I mean?
Right, I understand what your comment.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, they're supposed to be single-family homes, but they're not ending up single-family homes.
So single-family means it's not a duplex, a triplex, it's not an apartment building. It's designed for one family. From a zoning standpoint, if different families live in the same home, there's no zoning enforcement. Sometimes it's culturally that families, extended families live under the same roof, but from a zoning perspective, there's no enforcement mechanism for that.
Why not?
Basically, it comes down to legality. I don't, I can't show up and knock on someone's door and demand that they show me who, how does everybody relate to each other? And who is what, there's no legal way to do that.
I guess my biggest concern is, we've got so many developments going in right now. We have that development behind the houses on Smoke. And then they want to start this development on the corner of Refugee and 310. Where are we going to put them all? It's just, that's just my opinion. As a school bus driver, I know we're crowded. Oh, we're crowded, the buses are crowded, yeah. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other request was from David Kauf, is it? I'm sorry.
Hi there. I got seven questions here, but?
For record, name and address, please.
My name?
Name and address.
Address is 9720 Refugee Road, Southwest. Okay, and I've owned this property, how many years, 12, 12 years now. And the last time someone built houses across the street, pretty homes, everything, big nice, single-family homes, like probably this wind you're going to be doing is. And my property flooded severely. The whole front of it was completely flooded up. Refugee Road, they had to stop traffic on it because it was flooded. Okay, so that was one of my concerns. Are you going to be doing anything about the water runoff? Like there's a little creek right in front of my property. And it did good, but then when you built the homes across the street, boy, that thing, I mean, it gets completely filled. That one you got running across the street, it gets completely filled and it's horrible. Okay, and I was wondering, with all these single-family homes going in and you say there could be stores or anything in there, have you all thought about anything about litter? You know, there's going to be a ton of litter going on. You see everywhere, there's more people just throwing paper out. And what about trespassing? Is this community going to be putting up fences? The whole back half or a whole side of my property backs up into that property. And so how are you going to keep all them children and things that are going to say, oh, look at the pretty deer or the woods, let's go in there? How are you going to keep those people from coming in on my property? You know, I don't want that happening. Kids might just want to camp out, you know, like in the Cub Scouts or something. But I don't want anything like that on my property. And are my hunting rights going to be jeopardized? Hope not, because I haven't hunted in years, but I'm sure my grandchildren, somebody would like to go out there and hunt on 21 acres. My son and I, we built trails, complete grounds, like one mile trail that we walk in the woods, they're beautiful. It's C A U V. And they, they just had a, they come out every 10 years before this place. And they said, wow, this place is beautiful. You know, they would show me what trees are pretty and, and what to do, like you cut these certain trees down. And I've been doing that. Everything they tell me to do, I've been doing it to try and make this property beautiful. Because my neighbors, they all keep their properties beautiful, you know. And when I bought this also, I wanted to be a little peace and quiet out there. You know, I've been in the city my whole life. I said, oh, man, I got a place I can come to and be nice and quiet. Building things like this, I'll tell you what, that Refugee Road ain't going to be able to hold all this traffic. I mean, you see people, sometimes you got to scoot over real far because there's a truck coming down the road. What's going to happen, there are no school buses and things going to be going down there. And I can see Rex, didn't they just put that roundabout there at, what is it, Smoke Road right there and everything? And that's going to cause problems, I think. But everybody says roundabouts are supposed to be so nice, but I don't believe it, okay? And could you tell me a way, like when I give out all these concerns and me, how do you manage my concerns? Do you actually take them in your head and think about them? Or do you think, well, we're going to be making a lot of money if we sell this property and everything? Do you all think about me or anybody else or do you think about the money you'll be making maybe? I don't know. But me and all my neighbors, we'd love just to have that peaceful setting again. And I've talked, I know everybody on the street, we, we talk all the time. And I told them I was going to be coming here tonight, so it's not just me, it's most people on the street that told me about this and that's their problems too. So but I think the big one though is fencing, getting some type of fencing up so people don't come across. Because there's two other homes before my own. So, you know, I was just wondering if anything could be done, what could be done? Maybe you can tell me?
Well, as far as the, we did talk about runoff on the earlier application, so it can't, you know, as long as they're following the laws, they can't make it any worse than what it is now. They can only improve it. Well. They're not, they're not allowed to, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Other enforcement? I don't know whether Scott or Jack.
Which question are we on?
I'm sorry.
Which question?
I think he's talking about the buffering now at this point, right? Is that what you've gone to now between his property and this one?
Yeah, are you going to give, put a fence? Planning commission could require a fence to be put along the property line. That's under their purview. But arguably, the regulations would have to be changed in terms of what was settled in court to, to have that addition. So that could be problematic.
But you got to have streets for all the homes, you know, little, whatever street people lives on, you know. And so I know there's going to be blacktop all around through there now.
But where are we looking on here?
What is this, Steve? I live, well, you're, this, this plot is right there at 310 and Refugee. And the whole back half of my property is what butts in to the properties on the right there. Yeah, the west side.
Okay. So there's really no provisions. Planning commission could say that they have to put up a six-foot fence along the entirety of that property. They could put that condition on it.
That would be good.
Whether it's enforceable or not, it's not in the development text. So the question is that, if that's enforceable or not.
Well, I see, I see, like a lot of times I'll just be sitting out there in the woods and I see foxes and things walking around. If it's wild, it was in there, it's been sealed by one of the wild animals, you know.
The interesting aspect is the planning and zoning commission cannot enforce trespassing laws.
So I have to eat?
Not saying you have to eat it, but trespassing is a police matter. They don't have the authority to enforce trespassing. The police or the sheriff, they have no authority to do that.
Well, I've talked to some of the police officers already about it. And they know my concerns also. So I just wanted to come here tonight and see if you all could, just give me a little type of spot in my head or something that maybe I could do to help or, or, or why? I don't know, I don't know why. If I just know that one that you guys go across the street from me, it floods me, it.
Across the street, is that?
Is that in a township, that's not us.
That was not the City of Patasko.
Right, it's still runoff and it's killing. And more runoff, even when it be worse.
Well, with any subdivision, they require to submit stormwater calculations to show if we were to build this, where's the stormwater going, how is it contained? So you can see up here, they have the three retention ponds. So the stormwater goes to the retention pond and it slowly releases from the retention pond. So that looks at water quantity and quality. So silt can filter down and then the water is released at a slower rate. So typically, with stormwater calculations, the drainage in the area is improved because it's engineered.
Yeah, it has improved. And I know you've seen retention ponds overflow, right?
They can.
I know they have.
They have flood routing as part of, you know, if you get it very extreme weather, that they have flood routing that they utilize the streets and everything to take on that access.
I got this little ditch comes down the street on the side of the road, you know. And all that water that comes from 310 all the way down Rifty comes right into that little creek in line. And I know it's going to flood again, I just know. And there's nothing I can do, I have to eat the brunt of all this, you know. And my wife and I and things, we all live on social security and our retirement. I count, I worked 35 years, probably none of you remember it, but Western Electric. Then it turned AT&T and then.
I don't know.
There you go. So, you know, I was, I was just wondering, here's some concerns we've had in the neighborhood and I was just trying to bring them up to you all tonight, that was all.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Thank you very much.
I will make one comment too. You were concerned about the money we're going to make, well, none of us are involved in that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, even if we were involved, we had to recuse ourselves from participating, but I can assure you that none of us benefit from this directly.
I'm Steve Kauf, I live at 9720 Rifty Road. So my question is, is kind of very similar to some of our, our other speakers up here on infrastructure. So in that little quarter-mile stretch of 310 to Smoke Road, right? We built new housing development that's right there. Across the street is this one. Then we have another one that's going in across the street from my house and then another one at Smoke. In addition to Red Rock going in and, and, you know, we have the three Amazons, we have FedEx. We have a lot of building going on, which is a good thing for Patasko because it does bring in the tax dollars. However, most of our roads are two-lane roads. So has, has the city engineers done a capacity analysis on what the infrastructure can hold today? And what was that answer?
So with what we're talking about, we're going through multiple jurisdictions. So with what we're talking about, we're going through multiple jurisdictions. So we have the township, Harrison Township, there's City of Patasko.
This is our, this is the challenge I'll bring up.
Yeah, this is the City of Patasko, so we can only control roads that are under our jurisdiction. So if we see, if we look here, Refugee, and this is a, and I would have to talk with the Public Service Director, but typically split maintenance agreements, and who does what on Refugee Road through here. So from here to here is Patasko, and going this way, it stops. So with this, you know, it's understood, everybody understands that this intersection is problematic, where that becomes...
This can't be a compartmentalized view. I don't disagree. We have to look at this big picture. I don't disagree. And if we don't, we're gonna run into issues within the infrastructure, we're gonna overload it, and we're actually gonna cause wrecks, we're gonna cause more issues. So who, who, from an overall perspective, is looking at our infrastructure capacity? And who is saying gay or nay? Is there a roadmap go forward to support the new traffic that all of this is gonna onboard?
And like I was saying, the city probably controls what's in the city. So if we go out here, that's the county, so, or the respective township. So we have no control over if they build, how they choose to recruit the roads, what their requirements are, so we are left out of that. So with this, in this section of the road, they're requiring that left turn lane. From any subdivision, you can only require access improvements. We can't say, I know you're building here, but this intersection is bad, so you gotta fix that too, and this is a problem over here, you have to fix that too. We cannot do that. Legally, we have no authority to require them to fix things. All we can say is, your development is going to generate X, so that requires a turn lane which you have to install. The city has impact fees, where every new development, depending upon the type, if it's industrial, if it's commercial, if it's residential. So for example, each new home in here, I think the impact fee is about 1,100 per home. And that was based upon a study that we did with the, with the engineering terms to say, we can't just, like, throw out numbers and say, every new home is this. So that was based upon a study of land uses within the city. So every new home within here pays into a pot. Every time they get a zoning permit, the impact fee is due. So that money has to go in the area to benefit this development. You can't take it over Taylor Road and that's it. So what that could do, that money can go towards, can we upgrade 310? But the problem is, we don't control this, so we can't do that. Could we go over to Refugee here? We can, but we can only work within our jurisdictional boundary with, with the funding we have available. So the thought process behind these impact fees was because we can't say, hey, this isn't, you know, this problem occurred over time. So we can't say, everybody else contributed, you gotta, you're left holding back. So the thought is to try and say, we've identified some of these problem areas, now we're gonna put some money towards fixing them. So from a jurisdictional standpoint, overall, if there's...
You can only do so much.
We can only do what the task is.
Inside our square.
Yeah, more or less, within the square.
But that's, it just kind of makes it tough, because now we're making decisions that are gonna impact the bigger picture that we, I mean, that's just gonna be an issue, right?
It's just gonna kill us later on.
Right, that we know is gonna be an issue, and then we can't do it. So, and I get that.
Yeah, and that, and for, from a township, county standpoint, that's, that's where they should have the planning and things involved to know how things are gonna work. But we can't control their developments, their roadway improvements, their infrastructure, that's out of our hands.
Right. And then my last question is, I don't know if it'd be for you guys, or more for Rockford, on the west side, would it be a better idea to put a road instead of the back of the houses in order to create more of a, you know, barrier, I guess you could call it?
Well, the, well, the issue then comes with you have an additional access road, they'd have to completely reconfigure their whole subdivision in order to do that. So if you put a road in here, then you're having multiple access points, which creates more issues, because you have multiple people coming out at different places. It's better, it's safer to have, like, this is a line, the street across, so it's like, yeah, they're not offset, which creates turning movement conflict.
Gotcha.
Okay. And that is why I asked, where was that exit? So that you don't have multiple housing developments coming out in multiple areas.
Thank you, those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only speaker request forms I have tonight. Was there anybody else in the audience that wanted to comment on this? Steph Ward.
Do you swear in front of the testimony? I don't drink nothing, but it's true, so thank you. Hi, I'm Sharon Malgar, I live at 268 Stonebridge. I know you're only talking about Phase One, but I do have a couple questions. Currently, the water from the field comes to our backyard, and it's soaked. My neighbor's yard is soaked. We've all had to have our fences replaced, but when you dig a hole, it fills up. Two doors down, there's a hole humus. I know where to get a buffer, but when they start building this, because we do have underground creeks where we are, what is going to happen to that water? And at the retaining ponds, is that water going to seep into our properties more than what it is now? Do you understand what I'm asking?
If you could, too, could you put up the, so she could show where she's at compared to the, on the property?
I'm early asking this, but I'm just asking...
No, you're fine, you're fine.
Several, let's see here. Okay, go, yep. Go back, right where you had it at.
So it disappeared on me.
Okay, go to the left, I'm sorry, go to the right, under Drive, that's where I live. Okay, right where you are, that's our property. Now, what, and I just wanna know, is all this water gonna continue coming into us even though they're putting retaining ponds?
It should.
It's a nightmare now.
It should, based upon how they've shown it, the water should be flowing to the south. They're gonna engineer it to flow to the south. I'll defer to the engineer, but looking at their site plan, that's where they've accounted for the water flow to go to the south, away from your house.
Away from our house. Okay, and on, are we still getting the 50-foot buffer? Because the plans that I have that was supposed to...
If it's on the preliminary plan, yes.
I don't know. You sent me a plan, uh, last year, I think. So, and are they putting trees, are they putting shrubs, and who's going to maintain all of that property? Is it gonna be Rockford Homes, HOA, or whatever that's going to cut all of that and so forth? So we're not gonna be responsible?
You're not responsible, it's the Rockford Open there, each of it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have one.
Good evening, my name is Sue Bowles, I live at 166 Stony Brook Drive, Patasko, Ohio 43062. I'm, I'm from, yeah, from Sharon, National Neighbors of Maryland. And I guess one of my, my concerns, we moved in in 2006, we, my family actually were part of the rebels that tried to stop the referendum. We were 22 signatures short, I was on crutches for four years at that point in time, otherwise we probably would've done it. So I'm, we're honestly happy it's taken this long. But my question is this, though, with all this going in, you know, we had all the houses right along around the farm field I live on, and we're on Stony Brook, so we're on that far edge, a lot of different tree buffers. And we've taken down a lot of our big ones, because they were dying and becoming an issue. And we, 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 we kind of have a whole big inhibitor. But anyway, so my question is this, what kind of, similar to the questions, what other buffers are going to be, be there? I understand where our, where we are, there might, it's supposed to be like a park or something like that, which is great for landscaping, that's more foot traffic. So what am I, what else is going to be there to help prevent people from going a little further? And then suddenly, my backyard has the trash, because we know people are gonna walk a bit, walk and throw something, and then we're gonna have all kinds of other stuff. So that's part of my concern. Yes, I have concerns about lighting. We like the fact that we can see the stars, we're old-fashioned on our street. We like that, we know each other, we take care of each other. But what, what else is going to be there to help protect the property lines? Because not everybody has fences. That's one of the first questions, I guess.
We don't have the plans for that.
Yeah, we don't, I don't have the preliminary plan for the entire subdivision. I'd be happy to get that to you, but we're only looking at Phase One tonight, so I don't have the full plan. But we can, if you want to give me your email address, I'd be happy to provide that.
That'd be great. And I guess the other question to that, really, we're just doing Phase One over the 14 acres or so. What is the timeline for the, for the rest of this 51, 55-acre area that's all part of Phase One?
I imagine that would be market-driven. So they'll do Phase One, see how it sells. If it sells well, they'll move on, if not so much, then they'll hold back. After you get this one in, it's kind of market-driven, based upon how the developer sees things moving on their end.
Okay. And then, I know there's a lot of split between, who has the front part?
Southgate.
Southgate. So will the farmer still be farming the front end of it, or is that totally all gone now?
That would be between Southgate and the farmer. I would assume they would continue farming it to get the benefit of CAUV, but we have no control on what they work out between them and the farmer.
Because we, we love the fact that we have deer come right up on our property, our brother puts out trail cams, and we love watching at nature. So that's, that, some of my questions are probably more about the future and everything. So will, as this continues to develop, my, my guess is that we'll continue to get notifications of the entire process and everything?
That's correct.
Okay, super, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Harvey is going to continue the form.
Would you like to address some of the concerns that were brought up?
I just have some information that might be helpful, just, it's not, it's actually not germane to the FDP for Phase One, but the traffic concerns that I heard come up. First of all, state route, 310, obviously, it's a state road. So coordination between ODOT, ethnic township, the county, and the city has been ongoing. We're required to do traffic studies, all these things are thought of in their design. ODOT and the county are working on that intersection. It's outside the purview of this application and our Rockford's development. So if anybody in the audience wanted to reach out to ODOT or, or to the county, I'm certain that they would be happy to share that information. And as far as buffer, we do have a, a buffer requirement in the preliminary development plan that is mainly landscape-driven, and those, I mean, we have to adhere to those requirements that are approved in the preliminary development plan in the final development plan. I think those are the only two things that I needed to address, the water, the flooding. Obviously, we have approved engineer plan, there's three ponds in Phase One, one pond in the future phase. That's all I have to add.
Thank you.
Would, would you consider adding a fence?
Not at this time. Maintenance reasons, we put in the landscaping, it becomes pretty much, after it's, it's grown up, it's, you don't walk through it.
So is your landscaping mounded, and then with trees or vegetation, or how?
I don't necessarily think it's mount, it's mounted, because mounting gets a little bit difficult, because water doesn't always go one way, it sometimes goes, you know, we accept water, if we put a mound on the property line, a lot of times we block water on adjacent homeowner's property. So if we do do mounting, we have to put storm sewers on both sides of the mound. It just, it becomes more of a problem than it becomes a solution for both parties. So currently, there's an existing tree line on that property, line, part of it on our property or the property we're purchasing. And so we augment that and we put landscaping along that property line.
Any other questions? Follow-up on that, from that?
We do have one in, one in the, I'm just trying to ask a question.
I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Briefly.
So the common thing is water, being here is water runoff. Who do we kinda ask if we do have an issue from coming in?
That's easy.
That was easy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all I have with me. See, y'all have phones, take pictures of it.
Any discussion? Amongst the commission members? Deliberation time, I guess, is what I'm suggesting here. Just thank you for those who spoke out and shared your comments, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question about the homeowner that brought up the question about being able to hunt, and with the new development there, is there a concern there?
If it's, if it's over here, that is outside the city limits, so we don't regulate that. So the discharge zone, we do control within the city. So there's discharge where you can hunt, non-discharge where you can't typically. For example, if you have a residential subdivision, that would be taken out of the discharge zone, because there's no reason to hunt in a subdivision. I know Sugar Mill, for example, is not the discharge zone, so that's standard practice that within the city it would be, but none of this would have the effects on his ability to do what he wants on his property, because it's not within the city limits. Our, our laws do not apply.
And the only thing that would probably change that in where he's at is if a school or something like that got within an area of him.
Yeah, typically within the city, it's, commercial businesses, schools, residential subdivisions are typically the ones that, once it's developed, they're removed from the discharge zone.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other discussion?
Can I ask a question?
We're in deliberation.
We're in deliberation now, so. Other discussion? If not, are we prepared to act on the application tonight?
I think we have enough information, too.
Okay. I'll entertain a moment.
I'll make a motion that we approve application number FP-24-001 pursuant to Section 1225.20 of the Patasko Code with the following two modifications.
As listed on the...
As listed on the, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with those modifications, I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Frank. Discussion on the motion. I think, kind of going back to one of the concerns that was expressed during the public comment, this, this was actually approved many years ago, we're not adding a new subdivision, really. It's just another step in the development of one that was previously approved. No other discussion? Call for vote then.
Mr. Roaring?
Yes.
Mr. Obbs?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Schrecks?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Mancino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Timetable, I mean, what, what's the next step for them?
It sounds like it would be to get a pre-construction meeting and begin construction based upon their time first.
All right, next on the application, Plan Manufacturing Application, PM 24001. We'll wait just a second or two. Thank you. Thanks again for coming. Actually, I guess I should ask, does anybody need a break? Just move right ahead.
Power through it.
Okay.
Ready? This is plant manufacturing application 24001, applicant is Red Rock Investment Partners LLC. The location is 3,000 through 3,007 Etna Parkway, it's kind of a misnomer, it's all one property. Somehow that got the range of the droughty source. Property is a little over 43 acres, and the request is the recommendation of approval of a plant manufacturing application pursuant to section 125310 of the Petasqua Code for two industrial buildings with associated site amenities. So the property here is outlined in yellow, Etna Parkway to the east, Refugee Road to the south. Just for context, the Robinson family farm is located here. So here's their proposed site plan, you can see two warehouses, and it's kind of odd, north is to the bottom left. So we have two warehouse distribution facilities, about 225,000 square feet. You'd have vehicular access to each, and then a common truck lane in between. As we were reviewing this, there appeared to be several deficiencies with the application that wasn't just a simple, I believe you have a typo here, or you need to clarify this, there were, there were large portions of the requirements that needed to be submitted that were missing. For example, there's no traffic impact study, no mention provisions for water and sewer. Some of the screening was, there was a portion on long Etna Parkway that was missing. We don't have information we need to review on the mounting, slope width, et cetera. We don't have first floor datum, that's kind of to make sure that the mounting proposed is going to adequately screen the building. There's missing landscaping information, lighting information. So there's a lot that I can't, from a staff standpoint, we can't really review it and give planning commission any insight on to how the proposal meets or does not meet the codes, if there's just not enough information there. And from a staff standpoint, we do understand that these are new regulations, they've been revised from what Red Rock went through previously. So I can understand there is some time to get acclimated, and, you know, on both sides. However, just the number of deficiencies seems to be more than just issues with becoming acclimated to the new regulations. And staff is somewhat concerned with their desire to push on knowing these deficiencies. So based upon the updated plant manufacturing regulations, if you recall, the regulations changed. Previously, it was planning commission makes a recommendation to me to make the final approval. But it's since been amended that planning commission makes a recommendation to council. So regardless, tabling aside, this move to approve, approve of conditions or disapprove, that goes on to council. So the surrounding area, north, east, and west are all plant manufacturing. North and west have agriculture, and some to the east also there is dairy and Meyer Shank Racing. To the south is M1 plant manufacturing, that's at Etna Township being used for agriculture. So should the planning commission choose to approve the application, I've offered three possible modifications. The applicant shall obtain all necessary permits from the city Petasqua and Leaky County Building Department prior to construction. The applicant shall address all comments from the Public Service Department, City Engineer, West Leaky Joint Fire District, and Planning and zoning. And three, the applicant shall supply the Planning and Zoning Department with a set of mylar plans upon approval of the zoning permit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Start with questions.
No questions.
So. You kind of, you'd mentioned their desire to be wanting to move on. Is it, was that, again, through the discussions, it would, would the typical process be like, hey, we need these things addressed here? And the applicant wanted to still move on without addressing those, is that?
Typically, from a staff standpoint, as we do a review, if we can find several deficiencies, we'll offer to say, hey, we, we see a lot of things you're missing, you may want to consider tabling it. So we can't say you have to table it, but we can, you know, kind of give them some insight from a staff perspective that it might be in your best interest, but we can't hold them to that.
Okay. Good. Uh, yeah, there's a lot of concerns here with the gaps, but no further questions for you.
Thanks. House?
And just clarify on the tabling, we can table this until they respond and get the issues resolved, technically correct?
So from a tabling standpoint, you can say it's tabled. And then the deadline to have everything resubmitted is Friday. So it's a pretty quick turnaround time to have an application submitted. I'd say it can't be done, but it's pretty quick. You can do till a date certain, so you can say till the April meeting, you can say till the May meeting. So it's up to, it's the, it's the pleasure of the planning commission to determine, should you table it, will it be open-ended or precise?
And I guess to that point, in theory, they could still resubmit the exact same application and adjoining documents, even if we did say table it to May. And that's a possibility that could happen, I guess, in the world of possibilities, right?
In the world of, in the world of possibilities, if we say you need to correct these things, and they just resubmit the same thing, that's their right to do, I just don't know if the outcome will be to their liking, but that is a possibility.
Okay. Bless you. Thank you, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. David?
I don't have any questions.
Sure.
If we voted on it, and if there was a yes motion, it would go to city council to make the decision anyway, correct?
If there is a decision, either yes or no, approval or disapproval, it moves on. It's like a, we've kind of modeled the new regulations after the rezoning process, but it's a shorter time.
If, if it is rejected by city council, and/or approved or rejected by ours, what happens then for the applicant?
So let's say planning commission makes a recommendation, it goes on to council. If they approve it, then they can add conditions, if this isn't a rezoning, they can add conditions that, A, address all the stuffs, and then move forward. If council says it's disapproved, they basically have to start over again and go through the process.
That's what I was just, just make sure so everybody's aware of what are the steps. Thank you, sir.
Okay, no questions? Want to clarify a couple of things, if, if we were to table it open-ended, then it's really based on your call, I guess, from when it comes back to us? When you feel that it's not enough of the requirements, or do you just bring it back as soon as they've addressed anything? I mean, how, how do you decide when, when we see it again?
With the application, it, it does allow the city administrator to designate, determine if an application is complete. So if, for example, if they, on Friday they turn this in again, we could say it's not complete. I guess it's a kind of a gray area of what, you know, if, if we get a little bit of information, that we understand, it, it, the gray area, it's hard to say exactly. It's a judgment call at that point, so. So the, the city administrator that designee does have oversight in terms of if an application came before the planning commission, but like you said, it's tough to say, it's a judgment call.
Okay. And then one other thing too, the, the new procedure is slightly different than a zoning. Am I correct that if we were to not approve it, and it goes to council, they don't need a super majority to override that?
That's correct.
Okay. Unlike a regular zoning where they do.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions for staff?
No, sir.
All right, next we'll go to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Todd Ward, Red Rock Developments, 301 Fremont Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. Thank you for your time this evening. First off, as you know, this is not our first project in the city of Petasqua. I want to thank staff and administration, have been great to work with throughout this whole time. Obviously, they've never cut us any slack, but they've been good to work with, and I'm sure that we understand. I myself am actually a certified planner with over 23 years' experience, 18 of that has been as a certified planner that is in the midst of the public sector, I was in Greenville County, South Carolina, as the principal planner of land use for a number of years before coming over and doing consulting, and now on the development side. We want to respect the communities in which we work in, so I do want to point out that the, on the previous zoning case with the Robinson family farm, the easement that you saw there, we granted that when staff actually made it aware, made us aware of Mill and Columbia early on, that there was no access from those two to protect the neighborhood through there. Etna Parkway, Mink, and Refugee were supposed to be the roads for the, for the corporate park. So we went ahead and granted that easement with nothing, just granted it, so they could have access back to those properties and help fulfill that vision. That doesn't mean anything about this case tonight, I just wanted to kind of go through that. During my experience, I have been involved with numerous full ordinance redrites, combination of plant development regulations and ordinances into what's called a UDO, Unified Plant Development Ordinance. I've worked in a lot of states, and that's a long way of me saying, trust me, I understand working with new texts and trying to work out the pigs and put things in place, and the growing pains that come along with that. With that, we did meet, along with our engineer, with city staff, to go through what we needed for the application itself before we submitted it. We truly and honestly thought we had provided enough of the information, and some of that I'll clarify a little bit tonight. However, when we did submit the applications, the new ordinance, as Mr. Fulton indicated, they had 10 days to review it and let us know if the application is complete or not. We were not notified within 10 days that there were deficiencies. Furthermore, when we were notified that there were deficiencies, it literally was the afternoon or morning thereof when the agenda was going out, and they were finishing up staff reports. So there was no time for us to even try to get anything back in, clarify or anything else. In our experience as well, the site plan approval is to make sure that you can meet the setbacks, make sure you can meet the general requirements. That's why there's a law for minor and major modifications, major modifications have to come back. Minor need is you get into the engineering, the building plans, and everything else, and you see you need to adjust little things. That being said, we did try very hard to comply with everything, especially the intent of what the ordinance was trying to do with the mounting and the screening and the landscaping. So if you look at our landscaping plan, do you possibly have that sheet?
I don't, sorry.
No, that's fine. So at first, and I even contacted Mr. Fulton, said we were evaluating this, just to give them a heads up. If you actually look at the site plan, along Refugee Road, there's a city stormwater pond. Then we have to have a stormwater pond, because that's the way, north to south is the way that the pond comes. In between those two ponds is actually the new sewer line that the Water Sewer District is putting in. On Etna Parkway itself, you have large AEP, byway comes through there, both the transmission lines and distribution lines. Third, we have wetlands at the northern part there, that we are not going to impact. So we wanted to do a minimal impact of these wetlands to add. So after we looked at the mounting, we were able to fit it in, the way we did that was we lost a row of employee parking on the south, a row of employee parking on the north, you'll see there's only one row there, originally there was two. The mounting, as it comes north on Etna Parkway, past the second building, we hit a pitch point right there with the AEP power lines, the wetlands, and everything else. With the wetlands buffer and those power lines, what we did instead of staying completely right and long down the parkway, we fit the mound around to provide that screening against parking lot in the building, and still be able to make what we interpreted as the intent of the ordinance itself. So we did do a good bit of, of work to try to figure that out. One of the things that sort of comes up, that came up when I talked to Mr. Fulton last week, was that the trees, we did have the particular calipers on there. Now, we did show the landscaping plan, it showed the number of trees that we needed and things like that. However, the calipers themselves, we typically wait until we're actually doing the construction plans. The reason we do that is because that's when we reach out to the nurseries to find out what they have in stock, what we can get, and sometimes you find you get certain trees in a three, certain in a two. Sometimes ones are typically in a two, you find out, oh my gosh, they got ones in a three, that's worth getting those. So to be able to provide that ratio is typically shown on our construction plans, because we reserve that plant material before we submit those plans, and those plans are based upon what we know the nurseries have available. So additionally with that. So what we have done, I have tonight, just to show how quickly we can react to certain things, have an updated one, that actually has two aspects on it. The other part was the interior parking lot landscaping, we showed option one, option two. We chose option one, the engineer just put those options on there to sort of reflect the ordinance. I did not highlight that we were doing option one, so we've taken option two off, and we also added the note on there that mounting and landscaping will become part of the building. So I'd like to end that with a quick note. The second part, sorry, the next part that we looked at was actually the signs are consistent, the flood red chip one has, I can just kind of run through this. Outdoor storage is dependent upon the tenant will get, these are shelters, but these are speculative buildings we'll be doing. So we don't know exactly who the tenant will be at this point in time. A lot of tenants have different requirements, we, with the tenant outfit, this is when we showed the compliance with the, for lack of a better term, finished product. Loading docks are on the backside of the building, comply maximum line of, if you've not exceeded, no on-street parking or loading. It's shown, the signs are consistent, red chip one, trash and garbage control, again, is dependent upon the tenant. Access points are shown on the Etna Parkway. We did discuss at that time the traffic study. And what we're working through with the city, with ODOT and others, is the actual land use, the rule use, whether there's a mix of manufacturing, or warehousing, all warehousing, et cetera. There is ongoing conversations with that, and then getting the growth rates from the Mid, Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission as to what those growth rates we need to use for each individual intersection. We do know the number of intersections, we've already completed our traffic count. So basically, what the traffic study comes down to is we know we'll need three turn lanes. We need the offsets for all those turn lanes coming in. The only thing that we're looking at now is the taper, the actual taper of those turn lanes, to see if they're making it up a little bit. 100 feet, 150 feet, 200 feet. So the intersections are actually from Refugee up to the first entrance, to the second entrance, to the third, all exceed 500 feet, which is the requirement. And that has been shown to the Director of Public Service, who is aware of that. Additionally, one of the things that was brought up was the lighting itself, the photometric study. I have to admit, I did not notice that it did not go to the, to the property line when we submitted it. That's, I'll take that responsibility myself, we've updated that to show zero on the property line and beyond on the photometric. The actual fixtures that we'll be using to meet the full cutoff that we have to do, as well as directional lighting, those fixtures were actually on the original plan submitted. We just not, just did not provide the cup sheets, I have all those cup sheets tonight to show exactly what it is. The next thing that was brought up to me was that we have the floodlights on the building, that's not actually accurate. What we have on the building is we have lights that are required by the building code at the entrances. So they sit at the entrances, you can see that on the elevation. We also have a couple of lights that are exactly the same pitch size that we put on the corners of the parking lot. Those are simply mounted on the side of the building, so we don't have to have a whole mess of the building. We think it gives a cleaner, fresher look along the building. So in our opinion, with, is that what you, sorry, cup sheets? Finally, the last thing we were aware of, we may have misunderstood Mr. Fulton, but we thought the city was going to reach out to the Water Sewer District on the sewer availability. If we were supposed to do that, shame. If we were supposed to do that, shame on us, we truly misunderstood. So I contacted them and in a couple of days with that, I've got a letter from the Water Sewer District stating that they can serve our property. With that, I want to remind you that when it comes to this, we have three different places to make sure that things are done. Additionally, with the site plan, make sure it can meet the requirements that our designs will allow for the requirements of the plant manufacturing district to be met. The specifics and getting into the leads and the details come when the construction drawings come and happen. That's when everything gets stepped and stepped. Third, the actual physical inspections that are done by the city to make sure that what's on those drawings are actually planted, that the grassing is done right, setbacks are done right, that everything meets the construction drawing. So this is not the end all be all tonight. This is just the very beginning of the check and balances that have to be done. With that, I would humbly request the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight recommend approval with the condition, A, that the construction drawings reflect everything that has to be done within the plant manufacturing history. And two, any supplemental information that needs, that staff needs in order to provide a better overview to council is provided prior to the council agenda, which was just done with the rezoning application in the plant development from the Robinson Family Farm. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Sorry, Frank?
I mean, that's a lot of information to digest here, you know. So some of these things, you know, it, it seems like maybe there's some communication back and forth that could have happened maybe on either end. And so that maybe didn't take place. So. Yeah, I don't, I mean, there's a lot here. I, I would, I don't think I'd feel comfortable looking over somebody saying like a traffic impact study and things like that, you know, in, in a, in a short period of time here to, to see how that's, to really understand how, what the impacts on, are on that. So mostly just feedback instead of questions. So that's all for me.
Yeah, I'm just going to mirror that, that commentary. Basically, it's a lot of information. It's good that you got it together so quickly. At this point, given the amount of time we've had to review that, look at that, go through that ourselves, like that's not going to be, and if I, for me, feel comfortable at least to say yea or nay. Obviously, y'all are going to do your due diligence. You're going to do what's needed, it sounds like, and provide us what we require to make that decision. But yeah, that's really the only thing I have is commentary around that. So.
Yeah, no questions. I would just be adding on to the commentary that there's just too much missing information on the original submittal and, you know, it was incomplete.
Do you acknowledge that most of this you just turned in to zoning, the zoning department at this, today?
I acknowledge that there was some supplemental material that I found out the day the agenda was going out that staff needed. That's what I acknowledge. I do not acknowledge that we thought we were incomplete with our application. And I also do not acknowledge that staff ever said we were incomplete because they had to base it.
But you do acknowledge that all this was just given today? The final, the, the final layout of the, of, and that, that was actually had the wrong landscaping and he put two different options on there. He didn't state which one, and then you just turned that in today?
Yes, sir. That's exactly how we did it on our other two site plans. We showed the options that were allowed in the plant manufacturing district. Neither one of those, we have our highlights, which is what we were actually, we were just basing the copy and pasting the ordinance to show what the interior landscaping was going to be in the parking lot. So that is consistent with the other two site plans that we've included.
And then the impact was just, or the sewage was just given today?
Yes, sir.
And I understand that you're saying that there might have been a communication. Okay. That's, that's all I have to answer.
Thanks. Tim?
Yeah.
I don't have, I, I do want to say I appreciate the easement that you allowed on the other property. That really is appreciated by the residents. So I want, I don't have any comments beyond that for you though, but thank you for that.
Anybody else have any follow-up comments?
No.
Questions for the applicant?
And, and, and it is your stance that you would like for us to rule on this tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Scott, I'll kind of put you on the spot here. You can answer or not, but the, the additional information tonight, you were, you had not seen this, right?
That's correct.
You want to comment on the comfort level?
I just, I, I, I don't want to say that it's great or not horrible because I, I can't make an informed, an informed statement.
Okay. Anybody here to comment on the application?
Okay, so, thanks. Well, commission members, I guess deliberation time. So what's your thoughts?
I, I guess maybe I'll start. I, I guess I'm a little confused. I'm, I would. I, I'm surprised they don't want to table it to, to next month, but if they want a decision, I know. I can make my decision. It's just, I, I would recommend tabling it.
I would recommend tabling it too, but I, my concern is that not only staff review, but we have the review from the Public Service Director, the City Engineer, the Fire Department. All of them are saying they don't have enough information and they need more information. And so then that begs the question, how much more don't we know that has been pointed out? And so I appreciate that the applicant has provided some of the answers to the questions, but there are still more questions there. Maybe the traffic study will bring something up that brings, opens up a whole new can of worms that maybe we should know about before we send it to council. So, I mean, I, I, I can't make a recommendation based on. Your, based on the applicant's.
It sounds like they have.
Honesty or integrity that, that, but, you know, because we just, we need it kind of in writing, I feel like. We need to know more.
Understood.
Yeah. And I mean, to that point, i- if we proceed to say yea or nay, then that means a lot of information may or may not get put out for council to make a good decision on it at the end of the day. And so personally, I think tabling it makes the most sense because it pushes it back, says, okay, you know what you need now, get it to us and get us, get us the full completed application. It allows us to then make a educated decision on whether we do want to approve it or not approve it, depending on the additional information we receive at that point in time. And then we can actually inform council properly that, yes, we think this should happen, or no, we don't think this should happen. In the current state, I, I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes or no because I don't actually know in the full extent of how this is going to pan out. So I couldn't tell them yes or no. Yeah.
Anybody else?
I have another question though.
Okay.
I don't want to subject us to another lawsuit. So if we did not give them enough time to, if we did not respond to them correctly or within a certain timeframe, is this putting the city in a predicament again if we don't approve this?
I wouldn't say it's putting the city in a predicament. Mr. Ward's correct. When an application comes in, in the new regulations, it says we have 10 days to say, we're not even considering this and basically give it back. So we had 10 days to do that. We didn't do it. And, you know, partly, you know, eight applications, but that's where it was. So with that, that's why we proceeded with reviewing it because we know we missed our 10-day window. And Mr. Ward is again correct. It was kind of the day things are going out to say, hey, we're missing a lot of stuff. Would you like to do this? So Mr. Ward is absolutely correct. I don't believe, I, I think if on day 12, we rejected the application, I think that would be problematic. But, you know, we missed that window, so we were, we were responsible for, for moving it forward. It was just at the time we started reviewing it that we determined you're missing a lot of stuff. Maybe you would like to table it.
However, with that being said, we are within the full rights of the commission to table this at this point in time. And there would not be any legal, potential legal ramifications as a result of that. Correct?
I'm not an attorney.
Okay.
Nor did he stay holiday unexpressed.
It's, it's under normal planning commission protocol that you can approve it, approve it with conditions, disapprove it, or table it. That's under the normal procedural operations of planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
So again, not an attorney, but I don't see just normal.
Gotcha.
Procedural operation.
You told us that if it was a yes or no decision from the commission here, it would still go to council. Will it still go to council if we table it?
No.
Not until we.
Like the regular action, remember disapprove.
So if we put a revision that they needed to supply all the remaining information before it goes to council, is that a, a condition we can put in there? Or is that, does that not help council at that point? Regardless if we approved or disapproved, we put that in the conditions.
So the condition would be we recommend approval with the condition that. So you could say supply additional information, although that's somewhat covered in the, the staff report where we say you need to address all comments of. It's already, it's already covered in there as a, as a possible condition should this move forward.
Boy, it's quite the conundrum.
Well, kind of a personal opinion here, I'll tackle what was said earlier. I think I said that, that in a way, if we pass it on, we're, we're kind of abdicating our responsibility to make a meaningful recommendation. That's one thought. And then the other thing that would concern me is precedent. If we, if we pass it on without really knowing the details and understanding it, what happens the next time an application like this comes in? Are we setting ourselves up for something to repeat again and again? There's always that precedent that, that's concerning. So that's, that's again my own thought.
Mr. Chandler, would I be allowed to respond?
I'm sorry.
Would I be allowed to respond, sir?
You can, yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. One, there's no way we could meet a Friday deadline. We have still never been given a list of what staff considered deficiencies were. It was simply a phone call where we were told a few of the things, which I tried to address tonight. The, the mounding, the height and the slopes, the contours are actually shown on the plan. I would respectfully add to that by placing a condition upon a recommendation, are actually two things. One, the ordinance specifically states that basically the proceedings of the planning commission, not just the recommendation fully go to council so they can understand. I understand that may or may not read it. I understand that part. But so the full discussion would go, the second part is by placing a recommendation on it, it's not as simple a yes or no, in my humble opinion, in my experience. I'm not an attorney and I want to make that clear, but just in my experience, by placing a condition upon it makes it a unique recommendation that goes to council, thus not setting a precedent.
Okay. Thank you.
You kind of lost me on that one real quick. You said.
Well, I think, if, if I understand you're, what you're saying is that because we're putting modifications on the, on the recommendation, that would not be setting up a precedent for some future. The concern that I have about setting a precedent.
We have offered to work with staff to create a checklist for the PMD so that, so that other site plans can come in consistently and do, and maybe know what they needed and consistently the applicants to be able to do it. So I just want to add that too, without a checklist, it becomes only arbitrary as to what you actually need and how you interpret the individual ordinance.
There's a list of 10 deficiencies on this agenda that we have. I think that would be your checklist, would it not?
Again, depending on how you interpret the lines within the ordinance, you could say those are deficiencies or not deficiencies.
Seems pretty straightforward that there's a deficiency that staff has, has pointed out based off of what was submitted. Some of the information you've actually provided tonight with the lighting information, with the type of lights, whatever, so you're already, already on your way to addressing some of the deficiencies. So.
But again, to that one, the, the light fixtures actually are on the plan, the model numbers. We just didn't have the cut sheets. They're not told we need the cut sheets. I provided that for clarity.
So you still would be able to provide that with, within the time that it goes to council?
Correct. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Other discussion?
I mean, the only thing we can do is put motions and vote it up, vote it down. I mean, we, we can put any, the motion we want to table to.
Yeah, I was going to say technically it would, we need to do a table motion first if the table motion is voted down. At that point in time, we would then have the option to, the motion to approve or not approve.
We could put any motion, yes.
That way.
Yes, you are correct. Yes.
All right. Then. I guess the verdict here is for the approval of the, the item, but I would like to make a motion that we tabled this and I'd like to put a date to it, to our meeting in May.
If you have to table the PM 24.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to table the plant manufacturing application PM dash 24 dash 001 until our upcoming meeting in May. May 1st. Any additional?
I think we have a motion on the floor to table the application till our May 1st meeting. Do we have a second?
A second though.
Thank you, Tim. Discussion on the motion.
I mean, it's, it's six, one way half does and the other. That's the hard part with this one.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for both.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Mr. Chorax?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Smithy now?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Motion passes and this will be tabled until May. Thank you. Appreciate your, your efforts. It sounded like you've already got a starter on it, so I think you'll be able to resolve all the open issues by then. Those were all the new business items under both or other business. Do we have anything? I don't know whether. Any comments? No? Okay. No other business?
No.
On the agenda tonight? All right. Next, we have the minutes of the February 7th, 2024 meeting to approve. Everybody had a chance to review those minutes and are there any additions or corrections? If not, then I'll move that the minutes of the February 7th, 2024 meeting be. If not, then I'll move that the minutes of the February 7th, 2024 meeting be approved as presented, or second.
Second.
Thank you, Jerry. Discussion, full call.
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Brery?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Missino?
Yes.
Mr. Cherex?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else tonight? Thanks for your diligence and working through the long agenda. Appreciate that. You know what we're waiting for.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn to Wednesday, April 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Full call.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Missino?
Yes.
Mr. Cherex?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Brery?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Cherex?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Brery?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bobbs?